Okay, at six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda as it's presented. Does anybody have any changes or additions or corrections?
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
John seconds it. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item up on the agenda is Beyond the Yellow Ribbon South of the River Military Appreciation Week. So I have a proclamation here.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, we missed.
Did I miss again?
Number three consent.
Consent agenda, yeah.
Sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Okay, we have the consent agenda ahead of us. Does anybody have anything there that they want to speak about or question?
I just have a quick question on the claims for payment, and I'm trying to find it here. There was Christmas decorations and whatever else. I was trying to figure out who that was for, Josh, you know? Was that last year or this year? Hold on, let me see. I'm sorry, did I should have had that marked?
Yeah, I will let Robin speak to that. I know usually a lot of times the city will purchase Christmas decorations and then get them reimbursed by the chamber because we are able to get a little bit better rate than they are.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's what those are, correct, Robin?
Yes.
They took it out of their gambling fund to the chamber and then reimbursed the city.
So the city will own the decorations, but the Chamber of Commerce reimburses us?
Okay. What page is that on, just for reference, these guys? I'm sorry, I saw it once and others.
On, I think on page fifteen, under, those are actually the Gulf payables. So that was a reimbursement to an individual for Christmas decorations for the golf course. So that actually would be golf course funds and not reimbursed by the chamber.
That comes out of the city budget, or?
It'd come out of the golf course budget.
The golf course budget?
Yep, those are the Gulf payables.
Okay.
I think it might be back at page.
And then one more, I saw Tim, oh, he's up there. The twenty-four thousand for the flock group cameras, is that the Main Street cameras and is that the one first payment or all of them?
That will cover all of the cameras. That was everything that's been done up to this point and that will cover it for the three years. And then we just did get the grant money. So that came back into an account, so that should settle that account when it's received.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that was the one that we got the grant to cover for. So that's the expense and we'll see the grant come back to reimburse that.
Okay, perfect, all right. That was it, just those two I had those questions on.
Anyone with any other questions? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And second by Bruce. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we'll get to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. I wanted to get to that. I'm kind of excited about this. So I'm just going to say a few words before I present the proclamation, but you know, I have a daughter-in-law and a son that are veterans of the Iraqi war. And you know, I didn't think it was any big deal when the kids, especially my son, wanted to join the military, but boy, when they join the military, the whole family, the whole community, everybody joins the military with that young individual. They, you know, your close friends, you know, are going to join with you and put up with the struggles, put up with the unknowns. And good thing the day of letter writing is gone. You can use WhatsApp to talk to them when they're in different countries and stuff like that. I think that was a godsend. But it's great to recognize the young people going into the branch because it is a heck of a commitment in everything. And I'm glad this program kicked off this year for our high school seniors. So with that, I'm going to proclaim Beyond the Yellow Ribbon South of the River recognition of students entering the military, whereas the United States military supports the freedoms upon which our country was founded. And whereas entering in the military is a noble and important career choice. Almost two and a half million people serve in active and reserve branches of the military. And whereas the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organization is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicating to supporting our nation's military, which includes the local active duty, guard, reserve, and military veteran communities. And whereas the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon volunteer forces assist active duty military members, veterans, and their families with household chores ranging from babysitting, cleaning, to household maintenance. And whereas Beyond the Yellow Ribbon also connects veterans with state, local, and federal organizations who provide assistance to veterans who are looking to enter the workforce upon completion of military service. And whereas the community, the New Prague community, joins with the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organization to honor students who chose to enter the military. And whereas the United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, a special month to honor those in and out of the military. Now therefore, I, Duane Jerick, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim May twenty-fifth through the thirty-first as Military Appreciation Week, with a special emphasis on students who have selected careers in the military, and urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by thanking young people in our community who have chosen to enter the military profession in support of our freedoms, health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaim this twenty-first day of April, 2025. Signed by me. Thank you. Go ahead. Were you going to talk?
Is that okay? Are you okay if I talk?
Go ahead.
No, thank you, Mayor Jerick and council members. We are grateful for this opportunity, seeing to share this mission of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon program. It's the first of its kind in New Prague. We are, we are super excited to, to recognize the ongoing community support for our service members, veterans, and their families. The Yellow, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is, is much more than just a ribbon. It's about a connection with resources, unwavering support. We look forward to continuing this program within the city and continuing to support our, our veterans, our students, and, and their families. So I would like to recognize the Military Appreciation Committee, excuse me, Officer Zach Ambrose with the New Prague Police Department back here, Rodney Sawyer, Gunny Sergeant Charles Johnson.
He's not here today.
He's not able to make it tonight. Dewey Koshina, Ron Hosevar, County Attorney, who's also not available to make it, and Tom Wetchus, Assistant Principal at the New Prague High School. We are thankful for, for those commitments and this committee has done a lot of work to put this together, to, to honor these students. And to be quite honest, it's not nearly enough to recognize what they're about to undertake and their families. So we are, we are super appreciative of that. So with that being said, I will introduce Mr. Dewey Koshina.
Mayor, council members, my name is Dewey Koshina. I'm a Crudart River citizen and the co-chair of Scott County, our chapter of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And our organization is a veteran service organization. You pretty much described what it is we do. Earlier tonight, we recognized our students, New Prague students, going into military service and their, their commitment. Our big thing is camaraderie and community. And they're joining, you know, a group of, of people across the country that have a huge bond, being military members and stuff. And when they come back home, our hope is that they will join organizations like the Yellow Ribbon, like the VFW, like the Legion, and, and partake in community activities and stuff like that. So we're here to support their families while they're gone. We're here to support them when they return. And we are really appreciative that New Prague has chosen to honor these students for their commitment in defending our great country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tom Wetchus, Assistant Principal at the high school here in New Prague. I represent the school district. Principal Ryan Thorstadt is here tonight and on behalf of the school board and Superintendent Volmuth, we'd like to thank the city, obviously our New Prague American Legion Post forty-five, and the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee and organization. This is a great opportunity for all of us to partner together. We have something very unique in New Prague between the city, the school district, our surrounding communities. It is a military community and we are very, very proud of those that are here today that are graduating this spring, who have committed themselves to military service. This is a partnership that on behalf of the school district, we look forward to for many years to come. It is something that is said earlier tonight at the, at the Legion, this community supports one another. And as we told our, our graduating seniors, when they're in the military, they will have the support of not only the community of New Prague or surrounding communities and through the Yellow Ribbon Group and Foundation, they have a very large partnership. So City Council, thank you very much for doing the proclamation and recognizing this. Again, we look for this to continue in years to come and we greatly appreciate it. And we'd like to wish best of luck to our graduating seniors who are taking that next step towards military service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could those seniors that are entering in the military that are here, please stand so we can recognize you? Oh, okay.
I was just going to introduce, you know, I was going to introduce Rodney Sawyer with the American Legion. He's going to, he's going to list their names and their branch of service and then we'll have them recognized here. So.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come before you to recognize our students. At this time, I introduce John Metzdorf, who is our commander of our post.
Thank you. John Metzdorf, commander of the American Legion Post forty-five here in New Prague. And first of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for, and the City Council for the proclamation you so placed upon these people. And, and again, New Prague is a great community for veterans and, and supporting military families. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander. At this time, I'm going to introduce you to the students that are going in. I asked the students, when I call your name, come up and stand in front of the desk here. Then afterwards, if we could, with your approval, we could take a photograph with Mayor and Council. If you're all right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Entering the United States Air Force, Everett James Harms. United States Army, Joseph Brian Hartman. United States Army National Guard, Nathaniel Craig Erickson. This gentleman was not able to attend, but his name is Bryce Matthew Robey. United States Army National Guard, Kevin James Carnelius. Entering the United States Army National Guard, Samuel Jacob Don. And entering the United States Army National Guard, Sophie Pearl Hungerhold. And entering the United States Marine Corps, Danielle Celeste Sepuentes. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you so much. And I thank the parents and grandparents for bringing you up and allowing you the opportunity to serve our country. So thank each and every one of you. If we have Mayor and Council, stand up and we'll take a photograph.
Good luck all you guys.
Looking right over here.
Just a moment, just a moment. Can I have you move over a little bit? One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
That will do it. We appreciate the time and the recognition here tonight. A few quick thank yous. We had a dinner, a recognition dinner earlier that was, the food is provided by Fish Tales. We want to thank them, the New Prague American Legion, VFW, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, the New Prague School District Leadership, the Marine Corps Two Eagle Attachment, and the parents and family members of our students. Thank you, everyone, and appreciate it.
Quick question, is the Yellow, or is this the same as the Yellow Ribbon Foundation that came and helped me out at the hospital? Same diff?
Yep.
Thank you all for your help.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Now you certainly can stay for the upcoming City Council meeting. It's going to be riveting. You aren't going to hurt our feelings if you get up and leave, so. Thank you.
You really sold that, didn't you?
Yeah, boy. Okay, the next item up is city engineer project updates. Do we have Chris someplace? Oh, there he is. But we can't hear you. How's that working for you, Chris?
You really got to learn sign language or something.
I can start it if you want me, Mayor, and then he can step in when he gets his audio working.
Okay.
Yeah. Weekly update, you might have seen some work done on Columbus Avenue North by Mayo Hospital in the southeast corner of Columbus and Second Street. We've had issues for, since the construction happened in twenty, 2022. We had a neighbor's property flood every time we had heavy rains. We determined that there was an outside sump line that was never hooked up. The contractor did not want to take blame for it until we showed proof, so we took matters in our own hand and fixed it ourselves last Monday. Videoed and camered everything. Now we have the contractor, working with the contractor to make sure they are held liable for all damages. So if you've seen any work and why is the city right next to someone's foundation, that would be the reason. Otherwise, street project, last week, they did a bunch of underground utilities. Water is up to Second Street on Lincoln from Main to Second. They came back and did a little bit of sanitary work and they'll continue as long as it dries up a little bit. Today was a little too muddy, so they'll be back at it tomorrow. Moving forward, 2024 CIP project, last year's. Pretty big punch list they have of work that they need to do as you could, if you drive in that area, really no seat has taken off. That's what you visibly see. There's a lot of other stuff that's underground that still needs to be taken care of. We have been working with them for about a week now and hope to get that work started here in the next couple of weeks. Chris, you on there? You want the activation?
Not really. If we, we could all just get really close to this TV.
Is that, is he on a phone or?
There you go. Just, just wait, Chris. We can't. We can't hear you. Okay. Just nod your head yes a lot, Chris. We getting anything free? No? Yeah, I do.
Hey, Matt, you mentioned the 2024, there's underground. What kind of underground things still need to be done? That's, that's already covered up.
Yeah, all the utilities are underground, but after all, the work is done, we camera everything. And there's about four, ten areas that we are looking into of.
That's not, that's not from settling. That's just installation? Okay, okay. So there's going to be a lot of digging up in ten places. Okay. Okay. Is that, is that common to have ten that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I guess I didn't realize that you guys did that after the fact. Great, great.
Matt, while they're fixing that, can I have a quick question? I was going to hold off till, but it pertains to that 2024 project. So Lexington and trying to think, Second or whatever, there's a fire hydrant on the northwest corner. There's a pretty big lip there from the sidewalk to the, you know, it used to be flat, all the people's property. And I don't know if they, they put the city in at a lower level or not, but there's a substantial lip and it's affecting some of the neighbors' driveways that they're going to have to come in and, I don't know, shave that off so it matches their, their driveway? Uh, this would be more on Lexington, but right on that, yeah.
I think it's that they have to just lay the final layer.
Well, no, I'm not talking the street. I know there's another layer going on the street. I'm talking where the sidewalk used to be flush with their front yard. Now it's like depressed, so there's literally a little, maybe a two-inch. And I just was kind of, yeah, from where their yard is. And one of the people that I had talked to was going to have to come in and remove some of that dirt to make that flat and flush with the sidewalk and/or their driveway. That is, okay, all right, that's. Okay, then I'll, I'll talk to you. Okay, no, that'd be. Well, the fire hydrant on the northwest, but yeah, but the one that I'm talking about would be on that southeast corner. So yeah, if you can see it, it's okay.
Can you guys hear me real quick?
Yeah, very, very low, but we do.
All right, we're going to try this through the phone here, I guess.
All right, so I have Chris on.
The phone, and we are going to really get high tech with this.
So I do have a project update in front of me here today. This is the standard update with all the products we're working on. Unless there's questions, I'm just going to move on to this last item with the Transplantation Grant Agreement and Resolution. So in your council packet is a resolution for the Act of Transportation Grant Program from MINDA that the city awarded last year. This is, in the, this resolution is required as part of the agreement. So this would be through a, essentially a payment of constructively to the sidewalk on 12th Avenue Southeast. As part of the 2025 street. So with your pack, I do that, that resolution. And I'll ask if there are any questions.
So this is 12th Street up there?
Yes, this would be for 12th Avenue.
And I should note the local match is budgeted in the 2025 park board budget.
Okay.
This is grants for the hundred percent of the construction cost.
Correct, yeah. And you'll see the, the grant amount is less than what you're awarded because of good construction pricing. They do adjust the grant amount to what the actual bid was.
All right, make a ready now. Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, they take a motion for the resolution.
A move resolution number two, five, dash, zero, four, dash, two, one, dash, zero, one. It's an active transportation program grant agreement. That should do it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Maggie seconds it. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, the next item up is the public is invited to be heard on matters not on the agenda. Does anybody want to talk to the council, address the council on matters that are not on the agenda? Going once, going twice?
We did have the two people. I don't know if you want.
Yes, I see Kathy's here and Nicole, but that's for the next item. Okay, oh, all right. So, okay, so with that, I'll close that portion. The next item up on the agenda is the violation approval. Appeal, sorry. Please?
Yeah, so in the packet, just have a little cover letter, giving the background from staff's perspective. So we had actually issued a violation letter back to Ms. Peckel back on, I believe, the eighth of April. And we give a deadline of the fourteenth of April for some brush piles that were in the backyard. It initially included RV that was parked in some unimproved right-of-way. In talking with utilities and others at the departmental level, we determined that we would not pursue any violation with the RV that was parked in the unimproved right-of-way. But we did send a follow-up letter noting that the brush and everything in the backyard, which we have a picture of in your packet, should be taken care of and provided a date for that as of the fourteenth. So with that, we just wanted to provide you the letter that the property owner, Ms. Peckel, had provided to you, which is in the packet in full. the property owner, Ms. Peckel, had provided um to you, which is in the packet in full. Um, and I think at this point, um, it's really the best background I can give. Um, as far as the appeal, uh ultimately the council really cannot waive the need to abate the nuisance issue, but uh maybe provide some extra time if you feel that's appropriate um to do that. Um, and obviously pending any um comment from the property owner uh that you'll get tonight.
Okay. Any questions of the council?
Um, I did view the property from the street um level and I noticed that there was some activity in the back of burning of some brush, so I don't know if that was in, in an attempt to clean up some of the, the brush that existed or not, so. Unless that was maybe on somebody else's property, I'm not sure.
Can I come up?
You can. Just, just state your name and address, Kathy, and.
The first time I've ever done this.
Nope, that's okay.
I'm Kathy Peckel and my address is four oh nine Columbus Avenue North and thank you Mayor, Mayor Jurek and City Council for hearing me out a little bit. I've been a longtime member of New Prague and uh New Prague is important to me. Where I live is important to me. And I am hoping to clarify a little bit of the purpose that I am coming here. And um in regard to the brush, um, it was mostly just sticks that I would have been burning, larger sticks. Um, the brush got buried. So um, as I care for the yard, I have been self-contained. I have a ton of leaves that somehow get, managed to get into the yard other than the five trees that I have on my property. So I did rake and rake and rake and rake about five times, almost the whole yard. And that's after my trees have lost the leaves. So I was very busy last fall doing that. And um the, I was also out of town for almost five months. My daughter Nicole helped me out by cutting what grass was there and trying to tend to the plants, give them water and tried to get rid of some of the bit, larger things that I didn't want in the garden. So when I returned, it was pretty much a jungle. And that jungle, along with raking the leaves, ended up on a pile so that I could dry it and deal with it then in the spring. Springtime came, there was a lot to do. Um, I believe it was more like a week before the eighth that I got the, for the letter to clean up in two weeks. So then that gave me till the fourteenth or so, I think. So I am a composter. Those leaves would never get in a bag. I would have a hundred bags if I had to put them all in a bag. They would fly right out of the pickup if I tried to haul them, just like so many others that drive by and I watch them fly out. Um, so what I do is for years now, I have been digging a hole and I have been putting those leaves in there. I've been stomping them down and I've been composting and making soil. I like gardening. I like to have the clean soil that doesn't have the chemicals in it. And so I proceeded to keep doing that for years and years and years. Um, I do have a neighbor that's been there for a couple of years, a, a renter neighbor. And it seems that it is very important that things get reported uh very quickly, um, when I am not at my utmost fast-moving self to make sure that the yard is correct. So um, what I'm asking of the council is for some leniency. Um, I am a person that does like a nice-looking yard. That's why I grow all the flowers. That's why I grow plants, so that I can eat them and have a good, healthy lifestyle. Um, and so it, I haven't had a whole lot of other complaints that I know of, but particular this, this one com- um complainer about the things um in my yard. And um, so, oh, where was I? Uh, I lost my train of thought for a second. So, oh. I think the leniency would be to just take a look at the other side instead of just the person that's complaining. It's easy to just write on paper, okay, there's a complaint. Somebody needs to do something about it. So I get the, the complaint in the mail and the notice. But nobody really talked to me to see what my side of the story was. And I was a little bit discouraged about that because what I am doing is very important in my mind. I'm taking care of um a piece of land and I am trying my hardest to have trees, to um pull in carbon and plants and hopefully to make it look okay for the public. Even though I might get behind a little bit once in a while, but especially last year when I got called out of town. Employ, my employment is very important and I would not be able to live in that house if I didn't have an employer. So um, trying very hard as, as a homeowner and as resident in New Prague to continue to do good work. And um, so, so that would be what I would ask then is look into things a little bit deeper, um, because they're not always as they seem on the surface.
Are you asking for more time to clean up?
No, I've already cleaned up.
Oh, you have?
But in the future.
Okay.
So when somebody comes with that complaint and the snow's still on the ground and like, I don't foresee that I would have such a big deal anymore because mostly I'm gonna have to just de- deal with the leaves every fall. But not the brush, like I had had such an accumulation. There's many vines growing back there. And I was trying to accumulate those and in piles to try to stop them from growing because they just really do take over and that's what creates the brush. So I'm just kind of a, a quiet homeowner. I like to just keep working, keep doing, plugging it in and not complaining. But then I get the complaint and I'm just the one doing a lot of the work because I created it. I, I want that safe haven. I want to see birds. I want to see butterflies and have good soil. So yeah, it's a personal thing. But it gives me um a good, healthy mind. It gives me a good, healthy body. And I am proud of myself for doing it. So just, just that leniency before I get that notice would, it would be helpful. Um, uh, one more thing that I was hoping to squeeze in and now I don't remember what it was. Oh, yeah. I think I mentioned it in the letter a little bit. If the city uh website would be interested in gathering a little bit of information for those homeowners or those people that live in areas where they are, do have a little bit of um leeway that they can kind of decide how they want things to be instead of having grass. If, if some ideas might come on to the city website page about um helping to care for yards and making kind of just some ideas. So I guess, I guess that's the most important part um that I would like to get across. And I usually work nights, so this is really a privilege for me. I'm in between jobs now to be able to come and speak. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, Ken, what is our typical process?
Yeah, so typically we will um, if we get a complaint, we'll go out, check out the complaint, um, get some photos. Uh, and then typically we'll follow up with a letter to the owner of record. And depending on the situation, if it's just a simple um lawn mowing, we'll probably give a seven-day notice. If it's something like this, um, I'm just looking back at the uh notice here initially. It looks like the follow-up one, um, we only gave about a week, but it was initially a two-week notice that we gave. Um, so that's pretty typical for um brush and other type cleanup, which is more than just a mowing. Um, so seems like everything is pretty much typical of what we had done there. Um, and I guess my, my comment on this, I didn't directly write the letter or anything, but um, you know, certainly, I don't know what the conversation was that you had necessarily with city staff on it, but um, we're glad to talk and, and give you more time if there are specific reasons why you need more time to take care of things and um, you know, we're not out to try to, you know, give anybody a hardship to clean up their yard, but composting is great. Um, I know we've talked in the past about the uh native plants that you have in the front yard and everything and, and those are fine too. Um, but a lot of people don't understand that and um uh, I think it's great that we can share information about that um on our website, but we do have a natural landscape permit, which I think we've talked about before, but that might be a little different than what you were looking to do um at your yard. So there are different options there. So I think just keeping the communication lines open is how we can um work at this in the future.
I know that um the property behind the Parkview Clinic uh is kind of native plants and grasses and they actually have a sign that.
Yeah, that's actually a natural landscape permit.
Okay.
Uh, we do allow that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that, you know, some people may look at it and go, oh, gosh, you know, what an eyesore. They're not mowing, but yet it's beneficial for pollinators, et cetera, et cetera. But there is a sign that indicates that this is on purpose. So maybe, maybe something to consider.
Yeah, I don't think I fit in as well um with, with the guidelines for those. Because I have like vegetables to eat and I have like flowers or plants that may not be as completely prairie or but, but I strive to do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it wasn't necessarily a suggestion to obtain a permit for that type of landscaping, but maybe something that you would want to post in your yard, something of your own words, um, so that people understand the reason behind your landscaping when it's how it's different from your neighbor. And, and I understand because a big part of my front yard is native grasses and other plants native to Minnesota to aid pollinators, rabbits, birds. And um, so I, I understand the mindset. But some people might look at my landscaping in the front and go, gosh, you know, that's very non-traditional.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know I've been thinking about a little sign and I haven't quite come up as to what I would want to put with safety for, for that thought. And yes, maybe I will be going ahead and putting a sign up.
Thank you. Okay, do we have to take any action?
We don't need any.
Okay, alright. Thanks for coming in, Kathy. Um, the next item up on the agenda is a public hearing for the Brickside nineteen at eight twenty-five First Street Southeast. And then uh it's for the approval of the on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license. So with that, um, do, is any background before I open the public hearing or?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, I mean, I don't think, unless the city council is not aware of where this restaurant is, it is the one um just off of uh nineteen over um in the old Smoke and Fire Building. So as they're looking to open, they're looking to obtain a liquor license for that.
Okay. So I'll open the public hearing. Um, does anybody wanna speak to Brickside nineteen um about their liquor license? Anybody wanna speak? Going once, going twice? I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, I would take approval of the issuance of the on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license?
So moved.
Okay, Maggie, the motion is there second?
Second.
Okay, I heard Sean. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Abby, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm here with Ellie who is observing and she is part of the audit team as well. Um, I will be going through the power, audit PowerPoint, really touching on the twenty twenty-four highlights. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Um, Josh and Robin will chime in if um any additional information is needed. I will go through our audit opinion and our responsibility as auditors. We'll look at your general fund results and your other governmental funds, your in, enterprise funds, and then at the end, we do have some key performance indicators comparing the city of New Prague to cities of your size and statewide averages. Um, so the audit results, our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements stating whether they are um correct in all material respects, essentially so that users of the financials can rely upon the, upon them for accurate information. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion again for twenty twenty-four. And then we also do tests regarding Minnesota legal compliance, things like collateral coverage, timing of payments, contracting and bidding, and we did not come across any instances of non-compliance in those areas. Um, on slide four, we did issue three audit findings. Um, the limited segregation of duties, that'll be familiar for you for the last few years. We did have some improvements on that. We were able to remove several, several areas of that finding. The only remaining area is going to be the controls over the cash receipts at the golf course. I'm just discussing with city staff. That seems like one area that maybe doesn't have as much oversight as the others. So the finding does remain regarding that. Um, the material audit adjustments. Um, during our audit, we noted the twenty twenty-five street project was recorded into one fund and not broken out to the water sewer storm portions appropriately. Um, so the actual expense and cash and all of that was recorded correctly, just not allocated to those enterprise funds. So we assisted with an entry there after getting the engineer breakout. And then the last one, which is new, of the enrollment within the para system. Um, so the, the city has a liability on the books for a pension liability. It's a, um, the state issues a report allocating the liability to all cities and schools in um the state. So we review the um para enrollment on the para website to make sure it's accurate information to city staff. We did note several employees that were marked as active but had, are no longer employed at the city. Um, so that was back in December when we did some preliminary audit work. When we came back in February, we rechecked, did an additional sample. All of those were cleaned up. Um, so we believe the, the issue has been corrected. Um, since then, it's just that there, the risk would be that the additional active employees would change the allocation of the pension liability and could over, overstate it with a larger allocation than appropriate. Um, we don't think that the amount of people we saw would really materially affect that. It's just one of those control things um to, to keep an eye on. We've discussed with city staff about um just double-checking that as they go when um employment changes. Any questions on the findings?
Yes, Abby, if I could ask.
Yeah.
Just on the, on a, well, I'll just go down. On the cash receipts, um, can you give a little more detail, especially, especially on what part of the process you're referring to? Is it the point of sale and then subsequently just delivering the cash or is it delivering the cash? Or is it, there's nobody signing off of it or it's not balancing with the che- uh register or what, what, what do we?
Yep.
What's the detail of what we're talking?
Yeah, so we didn't find any, it's, it's not like we found something specific where something was recorded wrong. It's more that the golf course seems a little bit more on its own. It doesn't run through as many checks and balances, as many staff members through the city as, say, utility billing and things like that. Um, so it's just the general level of oversight. Um, reports not being checked against um the specific activity at the golf course. And it's generally a higher area whenever cash is collected off-site from the city. Um, so that's really where you would want additional checks and balances. So we discussed with Leah and Robin about um different reports you could run or check against the city activity once it's recorded um to, to provide additional assurance that it's um being entered correctly.
Yeah, the capital project uh item. Has something changed or is it, we, we, we stopped getting breakouts? Are we just in?
Um, no, nothing has changed. Um, I think it was missed because it was a new project and it was just the engineering piece so far. So there wasn't the big contractor breakout or big pay applications to split out. But um, the city should break out the engineering costs based on the engineer's estimate of what each portion will be. Um, so it was just missed on this one project. The other projects were, were fine. It was just that this new project came up um and it wasn't allocated appropriately.
And lastly, on the para issue, how many people did this involve? And is, was it something that happened throughout the year or just once?
Yep, so we sampled um ten percent of, we get a list annually of the employees that have um been terminated. So we selected ten percent. I'm, I think it was three or four, um, because it includes all parks employees, part-time, all of that. So um, we selected that and then we extended the population to two more employees and noted one that was also incorrect. Um, so that's where we decided to issue the finding. Um, and then we rechecked those employees when we were on site in February and they had been corrected in the system.
To these who were employees that were terminated throughout the year?
Correct, yep. But they weren't marked as, they were still marked as active in the, on the para website.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Okay, I will get into the general fund information. So this first graph is going to show the city's fund balance policy, which is to main fifty maintain fifty percent of next year's budgeted expenditures in your unassigned fund balance, meaning it's not restricted by outside parties. It's not committed by council, it's not assigned, it's unrestricted um, for future use. Um, you can see the city maintains that fifty percent, kind of common practices, maintain that fifty percent and assign out the additional for certain areas. Um, so really no concerns here. There was a a bigger increase from twenty-four to twenty-five than you saw in twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, just with the the bigger levy increase from twenty-four to twenty-five. The next slide is the budget, general fund budget to actuals. So that column on the left shows what your final budget was, the middle were your actual results for twenty-four and the right-hand side is the variance with the final budget. So revenues came in about eight hun- or four hundred and eighty-four thousand, more than budgeted. A few reasons, um, building permits were up over budget. Um, budget conservatively for interest earnings, so those came in over budget as well. And there was a few grants that came in over budget. Um, on the expenditure side, expenditures were also over budget. Almost all departments actually came in under budget on the operating side. The overage is really caused by insurance deductibles for the hail damage. So there there was revenue offsetting those insurance deductibles. Um, so that would have been within the revenue overage as well. So all in all, there was a positive increase in fund balance or your reserves of six hundred and thirty thousand versus the the budgeted decrease of sixty-seven or eighty-seven thousand, sorry. The next graph shows you your general fund revenues by type. So your major sources of revenue are going to be taxes, your licenses and permits and your intergovernmental. Um, intergovernmental is the only one I'll I'll really touch on. Twenty-three spiked with that public safety aid that was partially set spent then in twenty twenty-four, but that came in right at the end of the year in twenty-three. So that's where you see that that spike in the intergovernmental revenues.
Would that, would the federal show in there too?
Yep, federal is included in there, yep. Yep, so there was more ARPA funds claimed in twenty-three as well. The city spent the the remaining in twenty-four, um, but it was a small amount.
And they wouldn't show in the revenues because we received those back in twenty-one and so this graph has moved past that.
Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, couple areas of note, you'll see the spike in public safety expenses. That's primarily related to wages and benefits. Um, contracts were settled and became more fully staffed, so um, it wa- it wasn't unexpected. It's just um, appears to be a spike based on those um, that staffing. Public works decreased in um, the previous year, there were some grants received and so there were the related expenditures with those grant revenues. Um, and then culture and rec, um, similar Emerald Ash Borer grant funds in the prior year, so those were spent as well. Um, the other category includes transfers, so there was that large transfer out for the Parks Building in the past. Um, so that's why you see a spike there in twenty twenty-three.
What other things besides that is, was that the only one that?
In the in the other category?
The other.
Um, that caused the decrease or what other items are included?
The s- sharp increase in twenty-three, I'm just kind of curious, you said that was to do with the building.
Oh, yep.
But in twenty-four, we didn't have a new building, so I mean.
Oh, gotcha, but there the you're saying because there was still some larger transfers out.
Right, in comparison to twenty-two.
Yep, um, I would have to look at the detail. Uh, actually, I don't know that that's transfers out. Um, you have the financial pull-up, right? Could you go to that table and see what's in the other category? I have my lovely assistant pulling up what what makes up that value.
And then one quick question too, typically um, councils given a hard copy of this, are we gonna get a hard copy?
We prepared them in the past.
In the past, we've always had.
I was gonna say, yeah, I think the city has prepared those because we usually get a digital copy. So if you'd like a hard, we're gonna put a copy in the shared drive, but if you'd like certainly like a hard copy of this, we can prepare that.
I would actually, I don't know about the rest of them.
We did put a copy in the shared drive when I emailed it out. Last year in-house, I don't remember how many years we've been doing it, but we've been preparing them in-house. And giving them at this meeting. And I thought I recalled that at the end of the meeting, it was called the building because you saw it here. We can certainly provide a copy, but so maybe it's just a conversation in the future if you need one for this meeting.
Well, I'm old school, so I like to put Post-its into certain sections if I ever need to look at it and whatnot as opposed to scrolling through two hundred and sixteen pages four months from now when I have no idea where it's in there.
Yeah, we can certainly get you one. Anyone else that would also like one.
We will check what that spike was in that at all.
That's fine.
Uh, moving on to the special revenue fund balances, um, so there was not a a ton of activity or swings in these funds. Um, I ju- I was just going to note that the American Rescue Aid was fully spent, um, so that fund was then closed out um, as those dollars were all spent. Capital projects, a couple of things I wanted to point out, there are a few projects being finalized and um, potentially being able to be closed in twenty twenty-five, specifically the CIP twenty twenty-two and the Trunk Highway nineteen. Um, so once those are finalized with the county admin dot, then the council would um, need to decide if there's any excess funds or deficit where those would be closed to. Um, and then as typical in previous years, the new CIP projects when they come up, so the twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, I guess in this case, it's the the twenty-five and then the police station. So um, the city's practice has been to front the engineering costs before bonds or proceeds come in. So you kind of push those funds into a deficit until the funding sources come through. And then we would expect the the fund balance to increase.
That capital project, Tenth Avenue Federal Grant, there's nothing there. Why?
Yep, so that was um, that fund was created for a grant that was coming in. Um, so there were some expenses in the previous years that caused the the balance. You can see that negative sixteen thousand in twenty-three. Um, but when the revenue was received in twenty-four, it was booked into the general fund.
That was for those lights, right?
Flashing.
Oh, I was thinking about something else.
Oh, okay.
Now I do know what that's for.
Yep, yep, so all the activity, this fund was closed, um, so that all that activity is shown in the general fund now.
Perfect, thank you.
There's a summary table of your debt service um, obligations or where your outstanding barn bonds are in the governmental funds. What I like to focus on is slide twelve, which shows your debt obligations over the next ten years. Um, you can see they're pretty steady for four years and um, but we do expect them to to flatten out with the CIP twenty-five and twenty-six bonds. So again, that's been cities, our New Prague's practice is to um, bond pretty much annually for those street projects to keep that debt levy flat and not a large amount of fluctuations um, where your obligations are going to be. Moving on to the enterprise fund, so we'll start with the water fund. Each of these is going to have two graphs. The top one is comparing your operating receipts in orange to your operating dispersments and your debt obligations. So you want to see the the orange bar higher than the one on the right, meaning that your charges for services that come in are covering what you have going out in the fund, which is really how an enterprise fund should run, it should run like a business. So the water fund has been very consistent the the last three years, um, has been cash flowing. Um, you can see on the bottom graph where we have where your actual cash balances are. It's been growing since twenty-two, so it's very common of an enterprise fund, you'll see the cash build up. It'll decrease when the larger project or capital needs are are made. And then it'll start building up again with those charges for services and so that you have that cushion to um, do a bigger project funded internally versus bonding for it. The sewer utility fund, um, the the bond obligations did increase in twenty twenty-four. So operating receipts are no longer high enough to cover those on top of the operating dispersments. You did come out okay on the cash side due to investment income, hookup charges and special assessments in this fund. Um, and I know speaking with Robin and Josh, um, the city has been um, considering rate increases and doing a rate study in twenty twenty-five um, to make sure that this fund um, maintains where it's at and um, is operating effectively. The electric utility fund, no issues here, cash flow to about one point three million. Um, I know that there's a project coming up in the next few years to be paid for with an agreement with SIMPA. Um, but really operating as it should with those charges for services covering those those costs. Your golf fund generally runs pretty break even. Um, did cash flow or you see an increase in cash due to the the transfer from the general fund around forty thousand? This was reduced to twenty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-five. Um, so you may see that cash level out a little bit more. And I know there's some planned purchase of equipment um, to use some of the cash balance going forward. Ambulance fund, really have no notes. Um, your receipts are covering your dispersments, healthy cash reserve if something were to come up for equipment purchases or something like that. Um, so no issues there. Similar with the stormwater fund, it it seems to operate very similar to the water fund. Um, you can see that cash building up if a future for a future project. And those charges covering your debt obligations and your operating dispersments. A summary of your total cash and investments, um, the majority of your cash is sitting in those enterprise funds. Typically, that's earmarked or planned for future project needs. Um, so you'll you'll generally see a higher level of cash um, held in those funds. We do have some key performance indicators, starting on slide twenty. Um, so unfortunately, the state is continues to be behind releasing information. Um, so we do show the trend of your peers from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two and then New Prague in for city of New Prague information through twenty twenty-four, just to kind of see where the trend is going. Um, so on the tax rate side, there was a dip from twenty-two to twenty-three. It leveled out pretty much in twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, so not really anything of surprise there, it's maintaining around forty-three percent. Um, that's driven by market values and then on the taxes per capita, right in line with where your peers are at, about six hundred and eight dollars per capita. Um, trends a little bit lower than your than your peers actually, um, based on the the information we have. Um, some um, statistics related to your long-term debt per capita. So the the total debt per capita does trend higher than your peers. Um, the city of New Prague is pretty project-forward. Um, but your percentage of your actual debt expenses to total expenses is right in line with your peers. Um, so we know the city um, is in the cycle of projects annually, bonding annually, so that generally keeps your your debt level a little bit higher, but your um, as a percentage of your total expenditures, it's not out of line with where other cities are are at.
What would the threshold be for it to be out of line?
That spike in anytime you're gonna see a big gap between where the those orange and yellow are versus um, where the New Prague line is, so I think the the city paid off some bonds early that year, so there was a higher level there. Um, it generally, it's it's not a red flag, it depends how a city is choosing to operate. Um, I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, kind of, I thought maybe you could classify that if it was above five fifty percent that.
Oh, gotcha.
Where you'd have concern.
There's no hard number. Um, if we were seeing a consistent, maybe twenty percent swing of of where a city is at versus um, your peers, we might question the purpose, if there's an intention to it, it's planned for future projects, things like that, um, higher level of debt. You could still argue that it's okay. Um, if it's not spiking a ton, then I wouldn't be too concerned either. Um, just depends how the how the city generally operates with projects and bonding.
Okay, so if we look at that in twenty-one, there was a twenty percent.
Yep.
Spread between us and our peers.
Yep, so then we we asked the question then or looked into it in prepa- preparation of the um, presentation like this back in twenty twenty-one of, okay, well, why did it spike? That seems odd where where expenditures really low, so debt seemed higher or vice versa. Um, and that's where we discovered it was some payoff of debt early, so that makes sense why there was a spike. And that's why it dropped back down to a kind of a more average level after that. Um, so it's just, it would raise a question, usually there's a good reason for it. Um, unless it was really consistent or continuing to spike, um, then we would maybe um, have a deeper discussion about it.
Okay, so let's go next to the net, the the first graph there, the long-term debt per capita. Um, that's substantially more, that's a hundred percent more than our where our peers are.
Right.
And that's not concerning to you at all?
No, not because of because of the way the city plans the projects out and it's doing it annually. As you, as your bonds, as you issue a new bond, another one is usually dropping off, so it remains really steady. Um, and again, if if that correlated with a really high level of debt versus your operating expenditures, it may be more of a concern. Um, but your taxes per capita are also in line, which indicates that you're not taxing the citizens a ton more because you have more debt, if that makes sense?
No, but it's still an obligation that the taxpayers might have to ultimately pay. I don't know, it just seems when I look at that calendar a- and we're more than double of where our peers are, it seems like a red flag and we have five years of history right there from between, I I know twenty-three and twenty-four haven't come out, but if I follow your your the trend line, um, once those state numbers do come in.
Mm hmm.
It it just seems excessive.
Yeah.
To me for the long-term debt and I don't know if that's something that we should be concerned about over a period of ten years or?
Yeah, it also comes into play on what other cities are doing. New Prague, four-year size and just working with other cities in the area around um, southwest Min- or southern Minnesota. Um, New Prague is project-heavy and doing them annually to kind of keep ahead of major projects essentially, where we see some other cities, they have a lot more spikes up and down because they don't do projects annually. They're not bonding very often and then they have to do a full reconstruct where it's a really big bond issuance. Their debt will go up for years until that bond eventually drops down. So it's kind of the, how a city chooses to plan for their capital as well. Um, I don't know if you have any more background on it?
No, and I I guess the way I'd kind of, as Abby had mentioned, use those graphs in tandem. So if if you assume that our residents are paying roughly the same per capita as the other Scott County cities, but our debt load is in some ways over a hundred percent higher, it just means that we are, we tend to, I mean, as had been brought up during some of our budget meetings, tend to run a leaner staff um, and put that money towards improving infrastructure across the community. Um, if we went the other way and did less projects, but maybe ran a larger staff, we might be taxing at the same level. We just have a makeup of how um, the money is being spent. And so it it just, by using those graphs in tandem, you're kind of trying to understand how is that money being spent as it's taxed? And ours tends to go towards long-term debt, which is infrastructure across the community where other cities with lower long-term debt are either paying cash for their projects or they're putting their money into the operations side of things, I would assume.
Where would you get the information that we're running a leaner staff? Because I know that.
So so I'm taking that just from the graph on the page before, that uh, per capita, so per per person in our city. Um, we are roughly, we'll we'll just go back to twenty twenty-two since that's when we have all the data.
But that doesn't have anything to do with staff though.
Nope, but it means that of all the taxes that are being charged, it's costing about five ninety-five. Part of those taxes being charged per person are going towards long-term debt. And so part of that five ninety-five per person is going towards paying for that long-term debt. Now, if somebody who has less long-term debt is paying the same amount of taxes, then their taxes are going somewhere else other than long-term debt. It may not be going towards staff, I'm just saying that this tells me that New Prague needs to be much more. Much more infrastructure heavy and or long term debt heavy than other communities maybe in the area. Um, I can't say where their money is going, it's just not into long term debt, which we use for street projects generally year over year.
Right, so essentially saying you're consistent and you'll see on the next um slide as well that your. Your operating co- your your total expenditures are in line with your peers. It's just which portion is debt related, which portion is operating related. Um, so if they are, if they are having an increased levy to internally fund projects. Versus putting that towards debt obligations, then you wouldn't see them with as high a level as debt. But they're still doing the project still via levy, it's just not through the the debt avenue. Slide twenty two is going to look at your current expenditures per capita versus your capital expenditures per capita. Um, so I like to focus on the current, that's that's your operating costs, you do trend. Uh, pretty much even with other cities in Ca- Scott County, lower than other cities of your size, so. New Prague has done a very good job of keeping your operating costs. Um, on the lower side and with very minimal increases, you can see it's pretty much those inflation increases year over year. Um, and then on the capital expenditures per capita, you'll see a spike here and there based on a a large project. Um, but generally keeps in that lower level or consistent level with with your peer groups as well and. On your capital expenditures um per capita. And then lastly, a look at your um enterprise funds, um, the water and sewer fund, um. Just to show you how much coverage the water and sewer funds have to cover debt, so um, really no issues here, um. Sewer, like I mentioned earlier, um, on that graph where you saw that the current charges were were under. What the debt obligations and operating costs were, um, that did decrease, but the city is aware of that, looking at rates and things like that, so. You'll see that it did drop to eighty five percent of debt service coverage, um, but if as long as the city is aware and has a plan for. For how to fund that going forward, then then I don't see much concern. So all in all, didn't see a lot of major concerns in your financials, I know there was. Um, a different finding this year, but it has been since addressed. Um, you do have a fair amount of reserve in your major enterprise funds, the majority of cash is out there and spoken through for future. Projects, um, so really kind of seen a preg is staying conservative, but also always planning for future growth. Um, that's where you see those annual debt, the annual projects to keep infrastructure up to date. Um, so I think does a good job of balancing the two of of maintaining programs, but also um. Staying conservative with with where your operating costs are at.
Okay, any questions for Abby?
Yeah, of course I do, but um, just to, just to in my own mind, understand this. And under the qualitative aspects, you talk about the uh change in policies. And I have a specific question in only that. Um, you mentioned that we changed our county policies in the year, and I'm assuming, I'm just trying to understand how we do it actually. When Gatsby.
Hmm.
Uh, changes something, is that our policy to change with it, or are we supposed to have a formal policy that we approve?
It's not necessary necessarily a policy, so it's a Gatsby standard that gets implemented, um, and so. If the city didn't implement it, chose not to, then it may. Then it may indicate, or it would be a qualified opinion instead of an unmodified opinion, so it's not necessarily the city is changing. Their policies, I don't know of any Gatsby standards that require that, um, can you tell me where where you're. Where you're looking at the, is it the executive governance summary, okay, I have that.
Second last page, I think. Or third last page. Uh, it's not nothing derogatory, I think, I'm just.
Oh, no, I just, I'm just curious what the actual wording is.
Approving that or or is it just?
No, it's essentially.
Follow Gatsby and.
Yep, it's required by the government auditing standards boards that. They're implemented, um, so like the pension was a big one that had to be implemented. Um, we review the standards and then discuss with the city, so this one, it was really a a reporting change standard, so. How the financials look are slightly different, um, and then the compensated absences, one essentially said. The city needs to estimate what employees may use, not just what they may be paid out of their sick and vacation time. Um, so it's just changing the how the accounting is, um.
I mean, you may think it's big and material, but it's not really big and material change in our policy or way we do things, is it?
No, these these two especially not, there are some that come up that are a higher scope or a bigger change. Um, but but these two are are pretty minimal effect on the actual numbers and financial statements.
And I think I asked you this last year, I I just don't remember, but I know on some of the um. Charts, you you show a amended budget, we didn't have any. Um, do you recommend that we do, like, I think years before, years ago, I think when I first came. We did do amended amended budgets, it seemed like in November or something. Did you just try to true up things, it seemed like that's why we did it, but um, do you recommend that or?
I generally don't recommend a lot of budget amendments, unless it's going to be something where. It's going to be significant and consistent, say. You didn't anticipate having three additional police officers, and you wanted to amend the budget to reflect. Their salaries and benefits for the year, um, but if it's a one time, oh, we didn't expect this repair. And it comes in over budget, as long as it's can be explained or. You know, with your discussions, the council's aware, the department heads are aware of what's going on, then, I mean, cause the budget is supposed to be a guideline.
Right.
And you can't account for everything, what we don't wanna see is. A budget being exactly spot on to what the actual results were, because then it's not really a budget, it's.
Right.
You're just truing it up to exactly what happened, um, so if there's gonna be consistent changes that the city would feel warrants. Uh, an adjustment, things like the public safety aid that came in, that could have been an amendment. Um, but it can also be easily explained on the dollar amount and why it came in and when it came in. Um, so I don't see a a ton of budget adjustments in. In mid sized cities, it's the larger cities will sometimes do more amendments, but.
Okay, well, there's a column for it, and I just thought, well.
Yep.
Must must need a col- must be a lot of people doing it if you have a column for it.
Yeah, there are some, and and a lot of times it's moving things between departments, if um, there are adjustments on where. Items or operating costs are being spent, um, but it's not, I wouldn't. It's just kind of how the council operates and how they that how they prefers to see the budget. If you have consistent reports through the year and people are understanding where their own department budgets are at, then I don't see an issue with not amending it. Um, it's just kind of up to the council and how they like to see it presented.
And my last question, I think, is just, I was kind of surprised to see our general fund balance has uh. What I what I thought was a larger increase, six hundred thirty four thousand, thirty thousand dollars. And um, so I don't need to get into the weeds or quiz you on every detail, but maybe. Um, it's between, when we had that large insurance recovery, was it all paid out completely in two thousand twenty four? Or some of this a carryover that it wasn't all paid out?
From what I remember, I believe it it should have been pretty much offsetting, um, what came in versus what was paid out.
Okay. I thought I thought that may have been one of the reasons we had.
Yeah.
Contributed the to the on the or to the uh increase in the fund balance.
Yeah, I know that the all the departments, um, majority of the departments came in under budget on the operating side of expenditures. So even there, even though there was that overage due to the insurance deductible. What you can't see is that there were operating um costs that came in under budget. And then things like the building permits that don't have an offsetting direct expense are also going to. To be an increase in overall performance in the investment earnings.
Yeah, revenues were over expenses by sixty one thousand eight hundred dollars, so that's not a.
That's not a huge spike.
Part of the six thirty, but the big number was the insurance recoveries, which is kind of shows up in expense, but uh you. The way it's shown here, it shows up as a other financing, but I just thought that wasn't all spent, maybe that was.
Yep. So really, you can see the swing, the the operating cost being under, um. Oh, right, so that's the revenue portion of it, um, which does offset. Pretty evenly with the variance with budget above of three hundred thousand. Um, I'd have to dig in deeper to the to the revenue side on on what really drove drove the increase. Um, I know a piece of it was definitely the operating cost coming in under budget, building permits, interest revenue. Um, but I don't have the detail in front of me of of the exact expenditure of the insurance deductibles.
Yeah, well, the insurance recoveries were three hundred ninety six thousand.
Yep, so that was the revenue piece, um, but the expenditure side is included up in that six point five million above.
Yeah, that's what was confusing to me, because it wasn't in the revenue side, it was in other financing sources.
Yep, so it's basically saying it's not really an operating revenue, the the repairs and um. What it was spent on is considered the operating expenses, but the actual revenue source wasn't considered. Operating, which is why you'll see it in that operating or that other financing sources versus up above in the the general revenues.
But at the end of the day, what I'm just trying to figure out, out of that hundred six hundred thirty thousand dollars, how much of it, how much of it is really unassigned that's? Cash available for other things, but. That that you can't answer. Uh, thank you.
And I was able to see that unallocated amount on page one hundred and twenty three of the audit report. Um, that's the insurance, that includes the insurance deductibles, that's around four hundred thousand, so that would offset with those other financing sources. So it is truly within the the other um, the other areas that that were coming in, um. That's causing the the overage of the six hundred and thirty, the the insurance shouldn't should have had a net effect overall on fund balance.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Abby, typically, you've uh always interviewed somebody from council during the audit process, did you do that again this year?
Yep.
And who was?
Believe Ellie spoke with Maggie.
Oh, okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure somebody was.
Yep. Anything else I can do my best to answer?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, no, we appreciate working with you guys, your staff is great, easy to work with, it's always a smooth audit process and appreciate um your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we need to make a motion to accept this audit report?
Uh, so this audit was for ordered basically ordered by the council for the council, so yeah, so I guess it would be to accept the audit report is where it is and which kind of.
I just didn't see anything in.
Which kind of. Yeah, so it'd be with the adjusted page that was included.
Here.
Um, for you all, yes.
Okay, does somebody wanna make the motion to accept the audit report?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report as amended uh by page one forty, the New Prague Utilities Commission.
Second, oops, sorry. No, go ahead, you seconded it?
Hmm.
Um, Maggie made the motion, Rick seconded it, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mister Mayor, if you may let me jump in here real quick, just to see, I know Sean wanted a paper copy of his audit, did anybody else?
I would.
Okay.
I just don't wanna.
Okay.
Cause I can't, I can't.
One forty.
This one.
Oh, one forty.
Yeah.
All right, yes, it sounds like Robin is printing those right now, so you should have them on your way out.
Printed at home off of this computer, if I, you know.
That should be it, thank you.
All right, um, Pops facility is up next, Ken, do you wanna start start us off?
Yep, I'll give you a. All right, back on uh March seventeenth, the council um. Sent the recommendation uh for the uh request from Pops for an additional hundred thousand approximately for. Soil correction related matters, the park board reviewed that at their meeting on, um. Uh, let's see here, what was the date on that, the eighth of April, and they uh made a motion. Uh, to do a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars from the park property acquisition fund. To cover the reimbursement for soil corrections, provided that Pops facility is completed and documentation proving. That those costs were only related to several the co- fo- soil soil correction fees as what that is used for, basically, it's a reimbursement. Um, we have roughly three hundred and forty six thousand in park dedication funds um that are unallocated at this point. Um, so this would take a hundred thousand out of that, leaving a little under two hundred and fifty thousand uh remaining. And um, so that is a park board's recommendation, obviously, the city council would need to. Um, ratify that and approve that recommendation tonight to use those funds for that purpose. They're not general tax uh dollars, they are funds dedicated for park um improvements, so. It is the appropriate use of that funding, and uh as a companion piece to that, uh. The other item brought back here is a donation agreement with Pops, we did uh mend the language in there to include that hundred thousand dollar. Uh, reimbursement from the park um board, um, park property acquisition funds to make up. Um, part of that reimbursement to uh the Ford New Prague Foundation, again, after they expend all those funds, so. Uh, with that, I can stand for any questions, um, or Maggie as a park board member can shed more light on that as well.
Any questions in the council?
What was the vote I saw though?
Five zero.
Oh, it was, okay.
That to approve the hundred thousand, is that what you're wanting?
Hundred thousand, yes, yes.
Up to.
Up to.
Up to, yeah. Does, does anybody have the question on, any question on the park board funding proposal? Otherwise, I'd take a motion um to approve that funding proposal. So move, Rick made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Maggie, any other questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Stay.
Opposed and one abstention, zero opposed, one abstention. Okay, the next item is the donation agreement, this has been a long time in the works, hasn't it?
Yes, um, so this is the item that we had actually looked at at the April, or excuse, this was at the uh March seventeenth meeting. So this agreement would memorialize the donation, it would bring back um, the council ultimately to have the authority. And the um programming of the facility after the initial ten years where um. Ford New Prague Foundation would have, or New Prague Arts Council, excuse me, I need to get the wording right on that. To have their programming for their first shot at the nights, council would have the other dates that we could fill in. Uh, for other rentals as the city would see fit, uh, could rent it out like any other uh park shelter, basically, if we'd wanna do that. And then ultimately take care of the maintenance and upkeep, um, and own the facility, ensure it, um, everything of that sort. Um, for uh the long run after it's completed. So the donation really isn't any different than um what you had seen the last time, it just added um some language in there regarding that hundred thousand dollar. Uh, not to exceed uh park board uh fund uh contribution.
Explain that one more time, so for ten years, the the Pops board gets to determine, pick the dates that they want?
They will get first pick of their dates, if you look at um. Section nineteen, um, excuse me, it's actually only eight years, not ten years, um, they will have to um. First write a refusal for those dates between June first and June thirty first, up to eight performances. And just during the times of four P M. to ten P M. on those. They do have to reserve them, yeah, we need to be notified of that uh earlier in the year, um.
But just for the month, you said June first to June thirty first?
Yeah.
June first to August thirty first, excuse me, their typical time period, um, that they would hold their concert series. And that would run for a ten year time period.
Cause those are about every other week.
Ten or eight?
Ten or eight, you just said.
Yeah, you said.
It's ten years in the agreement.
Ten years and eight performances per year.
Oh, eight, that's, I'm sorry.
Cause they were in about every two weeks, so somebody could go in between them, if they want to do it.
Correct, and they had been doing Thursday nights, um, you know, this wouldn't limit them to that, but. They would get fir- first pick for that ten year time period.
Yeah, so it's not like it shuts it down, there, there is the other rest of the week before, and before that time too.
Weekends and all that, plenty of time to go around for everybody.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the donation agreement? Scott looked at this and okey dokey.
Scott wrote it.
Oh, Scott wrote it, alright.
And the park board is okay. Losing some control over the.
We didn't discuss that, we just discussed the dollars.
Just the dollars, so.
Yes, so ju- ju- just so we're all on the same page, this was basically the Pops facility, asking the city that once this is built. Will you take over perpetual maintenance for the whole facility, so that, that's kind of what this request right here is.
And ownership, except they.
Oh, oh, yeah, owner, ownership. Ownership and maintenance, but they do get reservation requests for the first ten years in lieu of constructing the facility.
Right, and I'm not opposed to it, I'm just gonna make sure everybody's, and I'm just asking Maggie, the park representative, if that was acceptable to the park board.
Park board didn't talk about the donation agreement specifically, but.
Do you think, feel like it's something they should talk about, losing some scheduling ability or?
I, I don't. No, the park, park board doesn't schedule any picnic shelters or ballfields or anything at this point, they really believe that's purview of the council.
Oh, okay.
So with that, I take a motion to approve the donation agreement.
So moved.
Maggie made the motion, I'll second it, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. So four, 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 and one abstention. Okay, the next item up is the general business. Um, establish special council meeting dates for board and commission interviews.
Uh, yes, it is that time of year again, um, when we are, uh, have some people cycling off boards and or just their terms being up. As I'm seeing your packet, um, we did get at least one applicant for every single board except for the park board. And for the planning commission, uh, for your term, we did get three total applications, including. Um, the current incumbent renewing, so at this point, uh, I would recommend kind of setting a date. As I was kind of looking at dates, trying to figure out, I know in the past we've done these before regular council meetings. I know that uh, we kind of discussed it the last meeting and it didn't really come to fruition. Um, Yellow Tree has asked that they meet with you all before the next council meeting. Um, and as I was doing the math here with, with seven applicants, I do wonder if it would be easiest if. If the council's available, if we pick an off Monday, basically, and meet at six o'clock and.
Go through everybody.
Go through everybody at once, and then if we can do it early enough, it kind of leaves us some leeway if somebody can't make it, or. Uh, they'd like to perform second interviews or something on the planning commission, that would certainly leave us time. So, I guess, first date I throw out there is their availability next week, on the twenty-eighth at six PM.
It's, is that a Monday?
That is a Monday, so it's next Monday.
I'll be out of town.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't mean that I gotta be here.
So I know you, it sounds like, if I remember right, you won't be back until after the fifth, correct?
Correct. So, but he hasn't said that, he hasn't given me permission yet.
So I guess that, that would be up to the rest of the council if they would like you in on the interviews, or if they'd like to do the interviews without you. We would certainly need three council members, I would assume.
We've done it, missing one here and there before, so it's not like it's.
I'm okay with it, next Monday.
Uh, yeah, I guess that'd be up to the council, um. I know fo- four of you are retired, but one of you is not, and so, uh, it'd be kind of where, where you guys can land on a time and. I know we'll certainly uh, reach out to, is, reach out to them tomorrow morning and see if we can make it, if we can't, but.
What time is the Yellow Tree?
So the idea with the Yellow Tree would be before the five-five meeting at, uh, right now it's still up in the air, I'm assuming like year five or five fifteen. Um, on Monday, five-five.
So next Monday you want to meet at five, is that what we're talking about?
I'm asking the question, that would be for the, the board and commission interviews to start.
At five?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, on Cinco de Mayo, it's kind of ironic.
Oh.
Five-five, five-five at five, or no, that, no, that, that would be, that would be for the.
Cutting into my afternoon a little bit.
That'd be for the potential Yellow Tree thing, this would be for, this would be for twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty-eight, oh, okay, yes, I'm good on the twenty-eight.
So I guess then Bruce, are you okay at five o'clock then on the twenty-eight?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, we will.
Utilities that day, but we'll be done by.
I'll make sure Bruce has you out.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I will uh, have Alyssa reach out to all of the applicants. Uh, are you available, twenty-eighth, alright, so one applicant, we're good so far. Um, and then we will tr- we'll get that meeting scheduled for next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next thing is city hall hours.
Uh, yes, city hall hours now, uh, has been on the council visioning document for a few years. Uh, and uh, to make a long story short, had staff kind of do some research on what various cities. Uh, in, in the tri-county area do, and kind of judge that off of knowledge I have of um, past positions. Uh, it does seem that there are less cities in this immediate area that do kind of a summer hour schedule than uh, southeast Minnesota. Many of the main advantages we saw for especially summer hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day was getting open a little bit earlier, I know a lot of contractors. Like to come in first thing in the morning, so they don't have to break up their day. Um, and in fact, you'd end up seeing a lot of contractors who are waiting at the door at eight o'clock, right now, waiting at the door at seven o'clock so they can get in and get their permits. So, I guess as we kind of did the research, uh, this, if we want to try summer hours per, as per our visioning document. This would kind of be what I would recommend, um, basically extending on the front end, um, Monday through Thursday, so you open at seven AM. And run till four-thirty, uh, this allows not only contractors, but anybody in town who needs to get a permit for some reason, but has to be at work by eight o'clock. They can certainly scoot in before eight o'clock, which our current hours don't allow. And then on Friday, it would uh, end up creating an abbreviated Friday, uh, by still opening at seven, but then closing at eleven AM. If there are uh, departments or whatnot that would still have work to do, uh, there's certainly work that could still be conducted, city hall would just not be open. So city hall would be open the same number of hours it is now, uh, just with an extended morning, basically. So, uh, if this is something the city council would try, or would like to try for our visioning document. Uh, I guess this would be the, the recommended try I would have, and it would basically go Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then we can assess and see what happens. There any questions?
So you're figuring nine hours per day with a half an hour lunch, right?
Uh, yes, correct, or generally right now, we run a, what is it, eight and a half hour day? Um, with a, with an hour lunch in there, and then that kind of works into, uh. That's actually, I've discovered, kind of standard city hall, all kind of across the southeast metro area is kind of that eight and a half hour day. With either a half hour, hour lunch, depending on how the uh, fifteen minute uh, required by law break is taken in the morning and the afternoon.
Um, is it just city hall employees or is it all employees?
So this is something that I've opened up to all the departments, I know even right now, our departments all kind of operate on a slightly different schedule. For example, our wastewater um, crew, they work four tens at the moment. Uh, our streets crew, I believe comes in at seven thirty, is that correct, Matt? Uh, and they're off at three forty-five, um, city hall gets here at eight o'clock and goes till four thirty. So this is something that I have talked to each of the department heads, and certainly everyone is kind of looking into different solutions. Because there are certainly different things that could take place. It's, it would be hard, for example, for the uh, public works crew to start work before seven o'clock. Because our no- noise ordinances kind of say, keep the noise down until seven, and we don't want guys or gals just standing around until seven o'clock. Waiting to um, start putting asphalt down, so um, these particular hours in and of themselves would be just for city hall. But I am working with each of the department heads to see if they're uh, could take advantage of some sort of extended daylight hours in the summer. Um, and if that's something their staff would be interested in.
So, none of these changes would affect uh, compensation costs then?
That is correct.
And i- is it true also then for the other departments, they might have some varying scheduling, do any of those? Different arrangements cause any compensation?
That, no, there'd be, uh, the idea with this would be to keep, keep the same compensation and work hours, it might just be to move them around a little bit. Um, to possibly work longer hours on certain days, um, or uh. I know, for example, public works, if you lengthen that day out, it does reduce mobilization, but again, you're also having to. Battle, like I said, noise ordinances and that sort of thing, and sometimes you might have a whole department of people, kids in daycare, and can't go past a certain time. So, the idea with all of this wa- would be that it wouldn't affect the compensation the city currently pays out.
I support the idea, but I, as long, but I would support it in, in a manner that's a, a trial. Um, and that, so you maintain the flexibility to, without causing heartache or issues with people that. You know, six months, we find out, hey, this isn't working quite, quite.
Correct, yes, and so this plan would be strictly Memorial Day to Labor Day, come Labor Day, um, we'd go back to our kind of standard city hall hours. And we could assess at that time if that's something we want to try again next year, or if it's something we want to make more permanent, or look at a um. Kind of adjustment of hours, there are some cities that kind of do a schedule like this, I was, I think Northfield is one of them. Their city hall, this is kind of their schedule all the time now, um, and other cities who adjust, just to this kind of in the summer, so.
I don't think it's gonna play well with the residents, to be honest with you, and the first person that comes in on a Friday. And took a half day and can't get into the pla- into the uh, building to do something, it's gonna be.
I, I would, I will say there's certainly an adjustment period, we, we saw that at the last position I had, when we adjusted to hours like this. Um, generally, what we saw, and it happened for kind of the first month or two, was the people, when the absolute deadline to pay your utility bill is on a Friday. And they want to pay it at four o'clock on a Friday, um, basically. After that month or so, that adjustment worked itself through, and we didn't really see any complaints. Like I said, we s- we ended up seeing a lot of people utilizing that seven AM to eight AM, um, because they were able to get in either before work. Or as contractors or whatnot, able to get in um, as early in the morning as possible, so, but you are not wrong, Sean, there inevitably will be somebody who.
Not somebody, I think a lot of people will be, again, only get a half day on Friday, cause that's what it is.
Yeah, and, and.
We did this on Monday or something, and said, Monday afternoon, you guys could take it off, I wouldn't hear of anything, but I can tell you this, when it's in the paper. Uh, we'll just hear it, we'll hear about it, though, really.
And I guess, I mean, the hours are the same, we currently have departments that work four tens.
I know.
And so, I mean, they've, they've even got a more abbreviated, I mean, they have the same number of hours, but.
But they also rotate on, on, uh. They uh, are on call every other weekend too, or once every four weeks, for one day or a weekend, where they can't leave. But um, I'm not worried about that, I'm just saying this, I'm not even necessarily opposed to it, I just know that it's gonna upset, uh. It's gonna upset the, the, our taxpayers, but. Maybe we try it this year and see.
Yeah, if it's a trial period and we, we do get a number of complaints, you know, then we, we'll have to rethink.
I, I will say right now, our Friday afternoons are pretty dead around here, there's, we, we do currently get very few people that come in on Friday afternoons.
Does, so, do we, how about this, do we need to do it tonight, can we wait uh, till maybe the May fifth, since we're not starting it till?
We don't necessarily have to, my thought was if we were gonna change to get, get the word out as early as possible, which is why we kind of brought it forward now. Um, we certainly don't have to do it tonight, and we certainly don't have to do it, it was just certainly some, that's been on the visioning list for a few years now, and so.
Well, I'm pretty sure Patrick will write about it in the paper, and we'll hear something in the next week or two about it, but um. I mean, like I said, personally, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just know how it plays.
No, am I wrong? No, you're not wrong, and I have a couple ideas too. But I want to think them through and write them down, what I've seen in other communities.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, I'm certainly.
I, I don't want to sit up here and.
No, and I'm, I'm, I'm certainly open to ideas, like I said, this is something I was trying to work off the visioning document that we've been talking about for a few years now, so. Trying to come up with something that would be advantageous, which would be the opening city hall a little bit earlier.
No, I agree, I, I agree with that, and um, you know, that's what I'm trying to.
Do you count the uh, walk-in traffic, do you monitor it?
We have before, I don't, we have not done it as over the last couple of months, but I know that.
Imagine that walk-ins have reduced over the years.
I, I, I mean, even since I've been here, I've noticed that we've had less walk-ins, as more people get to automatic pays, or. We got online pay now for a lot of our permits, and so, our walk-in permit traffic has reduced drastically, as people now would just rather submit online and get their approval online. And we never s- see them, so. And I would imagine as we go forward, that's only going to increase.
Are, are most people doing permits online?
Say it again?
Are most people doing permits online?
Um, if not online, at least through email, where they don't have to come in. And uh, our online per- portal through Casell has been really nice for people, because you can actually submit your permits through the portal. Including attachments and everything, so, yeah, it's greatly increased over the past, that's been about a year, I guess, since we've had Casell up and running.
So, so do, are there very, a very few people actually come in to fill out a permit application?
I would say the majority of people that come in to fill something up probably have a question and want to talk to one of our inspectors about a particular time.
Done by appointment, or they walk in to ask that question?
Get a lot of walk-in for that.
Okay.
So, so I will say, one of the advan- advantages now, um, is we do have our newsletter, and this particular change could be in the newsletter. To get out is one way to get it out, um, waiting, we kind of miss that uh, particular.
Yeah, no, I agree. When's the, yeah, go ahead.
No, I, 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 I get, you know, who wouldn't want that, I, I, I totally get it, it's just the, the way it's gonna play. In the press, and then the comments around town is the concerning part about it. So, I guess, uh, can we wait, I mean, we can still hit that Memorial Day if we decide to go with it. Um, can we wait until the next council meeting on the fifth to?
I think we could.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
My only concern is staff time to get adjusted for daycare and such.
I think we're gonna wait, so, till next week, or next meeting, so.
I guess, I guess are there any other comments then that we, I can take from this other than the fact that we're waiting, cause I want to make sure that. Um, I'm bringing you guys something that you want to see.
Yep, well, I'm gonna give you my ideas, I'll write them down, it's only a couple, it's not a lot.
Okay.
But it's a couple.
Well, it isn't our idea though, it's your idea, that's what makes it worse, is that, cause you guys are coming back wanting something else.
It's been on the visioning document for three years that you guys approved, and so.
Right, and now we're all, well, all of a sudden it pops up again, another, you know, a month before, but.
I mean, we can.
There's a lot of things on that vision document that are maybe things we should consider and discuss, not just get it thrown out to one. Deal a month before.
I mean, and, and generally, we do discuss them, that's why I bring them forward, I mean, I could just leave it on there, and we could leave it on for the next ten years and never bring it up.
I get it.
If we want to scrap this, I can take it off the vision.
No, I, I'm not saying I want to scrap it either, I'm just, I see, I know how it plays out there, and it's, that's the concerning part for. As a representative of the taxpayer, so.
It doesn't matter, do we do it this week or next week, it doesn't matter. You guys want to wait, we'll wait.
Well, the mayor has a couple of ideas that he wants to bring forward. Well, the mayor has a couple of ideas that he wants to bring forward, so then let's go ahead and table this until, or May fifth meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, um, now, next item up is the police station bid opening.
Uh, yes, I'll, I will pack this, pass this off to John.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we are here seeking approval of the um. Police station addition renovation. Uh, a number of weeks ago, we went through a budget presentation and. We shared the information related to the bidding contractors uh that were, that submitted a bid for it and so. Tonight, we're seeking approval um to have the city enter into a contract with MedCon Construction for the. Uh, seven million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand based on uh the letter that you have in your packet. Uh, you also have an updated budget in there, which is uh in alignment with what we had talked about at the last meeting, which shows. Uh, the uh, ten, ten million four hundred ninety thousand dollar um CIP bond for that. Uh, the cash amount shown in there is a variable. If we need it, we need it. If we don't, we don't. So. Um, I think we're in good shape overall with contingencies. The one change in there is we are recommending rejection of the one alternate. That we have in there for the reasons that we stated in the letter. It's uh certainly, it is something um that could be done. Uh, and that with our conversations with city administration and with fire chief, um, their thought is to wait on that. It isn't something that would. Is needed based on how the building is used and, and with the dollar amount in there and trying to keep costs down on this project. Uh, it was felt that that could be done uh in the future and I agree with that. And so with that, I would um. Answer any questions that the council might have, but we are looking to um get approval to proceed with the contract with MedCon Construction. Which would then start the next phase of the addition and renovation to that facility.
Okay. Any questions for John? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve the resolution that's in your packet.
I just, wait, I do. I just have a comment. I don't know if anybody read this article in Sunday's paper. Um, it really went off on a council member in International Falls, but it started out as a group of people that were very upset. On a police station, to be honest with you. Um, nobody saw it?
Nope.
I read it.
Did you?
I read it, yeah.
And you read it too, okay. So, um, I was just surprised, but I think you can. Uh, once again, see that there is uh, the, the money being spent is being watched closely and that there's a, a. Large contingency, I think, in town of feeling that um, we are spending way too much. And this is a more of a want than a need at this point. Um, and uh. I said my piece, that's all. I just wanted, I'm glad that you guys read it, so.
No, I just, I didn't, but.
Well, here, you can take it home with you.
Can I?
Yes, most certainly.
All right, any other questions or discussion? I'll offer resolution twenty-five dash zero four dash twenty-one dash zero two, accepting the bids for the police station expansion. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick makes a second. Is there any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep, and then the next, we're down to miscellaneous, so I'll um go around the horn. Matt. I know, I, I did that on purpose.
Uh, just one item. Uh, I got final quotes for, man, it seems loud today. Uh, I got quotes today um for a new bypass control. Uh. Sorry, a cabinet at the bypass lift station behind the bus garage. That's our main uh lift station. Uh, it was in our capital um. To be fixed this year, we budgeted eighty thousand dollars. I received two quotes of a low bid of sixty thousand from Quality Flow from in town. Um, so I'd like to move forward with that, uh, especially with tariffs and all that, uh, with the unknown. And this price is only good for thirty days, so I just wanted to make you aware of. If you see that in accounts payable, that um, the control cabinet at the bypass lift station. Sixty thousand from Quality Flow. Uh, you'll probably see that in the next two weeks.
Matt, didn't we just fix one of, there's two pumps there, right? Is this?
Yeah, this is.
One that we just replaced a number of year, a few years back.
Uh, we replaced both pumps under the ground that pumps everything. This is a control cabinet that tells when the pumps to turn on or off.
Oh, okay.
Control cabinet would be thirty-five years old and it is a safety hazard.
Okay, all right, no, good enough. I just was, I knew we worked.
We are, we are using Sureflow?
I'm sorry.
We're using Sureflow for that?
Quality Flow. Yep, that's all I had.
Okay, Chief? Nothing?
Um, we got the RFP out for the compensation study and we've already started receiving um notification of intent to reply. Or that people have received it, so.
Quick update on the Settlers Park uh prerestoration project that we had hired a new contractor, RES, to do that work. We had a meeting this morning. Myself, Matt Rinda, uh, Kier Chapman and Jim Calgery. Um, I think we got a good game plan to finish up the herbicide placement out there. And they'll do that in May and then they hope to have uh the drill seeding done uh during the month of June. Outside chance that it could slide into fall if the vegetation really takes off, kind of like it had done last year, but um. Should see planning done uh by June thirtieth. So it's kind of the game plan and um, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but. The main thing you'll see at this early point will be a cover crop of oats and then um probably next spring, we'll start seeing the actual. Um, Forbes or the wildflowers come through and then that'll take off over time, but there's about a two, three-year management period there, so. Won't look great before. It looks wonderful, but um it is on its way and we feel very confident in the new contractor.
Can you uh, first of all, a quick question, why is there a new contractor?
If you remember, the old contract, we had to cancel the agreement. They did not uh perform uh the contract appropriately. And we canceled that. We didn't have to pay him anything for the work they had completed. And then we uh went back to the list and uh found the second highest bidder, which is still under our grant amount.
Okay.
Um, and this is a hundred percent funded by uh the DNR grant.
And um, the residents around Settlers Park have been, you were notified at one point of this happening.
Correct.
Can, can you give Alda just a little quick letter of an update?
We do plan to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, because we know it, it was a trying year for every resident around there and it looked awful, so.
Not complaining, but when I'm stopping.
No, we know, everything that went wrong could have went wrong.
Lakeville and they want to talk in the aisle about that particular thing, then.
Okay. But we think we're in the path.
People, so, okay.
Yep, thank you.
And to who stopped me? It didn't bother me that, that they stopped me. I want them to do that, but.
Yeah.
I'm not complaining. I just want you guys to know that it's a hot topic.
Yeah, it is, yep, yep.
Uh, I just want to bring up one quick thing. I know uh, kind of, I guess we'll say tradition has been of the city council. To include a letter every month in the newsletter um on a rotating basis. I will say I'm getting less participation. Um, kind of across the council and so uh, I guess I'll kind of leave it up to the council. Is this something you want to continue doing? We certainly have the ability to fill that space ourselves. Um, like I said, traditionally, that's always kind of been a avenue that. Allows council members or the mayor to um kind of get their voice out there, but.
Well, is there a list with their names on it? I know I've asked this a couple of different times.
There certainly has been, and I know that list, I know, has been sent out every year. And I know, like I said, since I've been here. Been less and less participation every month where it seems like I'm writing the letter. Um, so. Just asking if that's something the council wants to continue doing, or uh is that, do we kind of want? We, we, like I said, we have staff. We certainly have other stuff we can fill that letter with, but that kind of, we'll call it the front page. Has always been kind of reserved, at least since I've been here.
Well, why can't we leave it like it is? If we got something we want to say, we'll say, let us get on a letter and um otherwise, fill it in. Uh, what, what are you bringing up now for?
I, I guess I'm bringing it up to, to try to help plan, like our staff plan a little bit, because I know there's, there's times that uh. Staff that do this will basically say, all right, like, we'll get our letter built out and then we'll kind of come down at the last day and. Um, they'll be calling, trying to figure out who, who's coming in here or not, who's not, and uh. And then it usually ends up on my desk and I've got about a half hour to figure something out, so.
Yeah, we don't want to waste staff time writing letters if we're, just to write them.
Uh, I, I personally don't feel like I need to be on a newsletter or, or to do that to, for any. Reason. Um, so if, if we're thinking about trying to rethink how we do it or how we produce it, I'm, I'm. Totally comfortable with it.
Okay.
I, I would be, um, the format of having someone write one, I, I kind of like. But I don't know that, um, I would get more value if Matt would write one once and the police chief would write one once. I get, I would think there'd be a lot more benefit from having the community know more of our people like that than. That's all you need to know more about me. Um, so I, I, I think that. You guys know the, the boots on the ground stuff that's happening and you can, you know, say it more, more. Distinctly than, than we can sometimes, so. If that's what you're thinking, or are you thinking just doing away with any kind of?
Was it, was it, and I, I don't know what I'm thinking at this point. I know it's just more of a comment of, like I said, this has kind of been the staple. That's been in the newsletter at least since I've been here and so I wanted to address it that um allow you guys to say, hey, you know what? Maybe we as a counselor ready to step away from that or, no, what? No, we do like that. Let's leave that in there. So that's kind of what this conversation was about.
Well, Sean, did, did Chuck, is Chuck the one that started that?
Yeah, Chuck started it because he got tired of writing it every month. It was a minute with the mayor and then he wanted to expand it.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah, so.
We could go back to that, right?
And it's always, yeah, we could do that.
I think what I'm hearing is wanting to go back to a minute with the mayor.
Exactly, I mean, that's like having a donut with the mayor at the, yeah.
That's right.
We can have a donut with the mayor and he'll read you the letter.
Let's do it bi-weekly then, too.
Tim, Tim and the mayor can share a donut.
Wouldn't that be nice? I mean, isn't there something that can, or somebody could put a, a note about uh Settlers Park in there?
And yeah.
And so, not only the people around there, but everybody that drives down Tenth Street and sees it and says what's going on.
So I guess, I guess what I'm hearing, and you guys can run me off the road if I'm saying this wrong, is we're, maybe we're looking at. You guys are open to letting me kind of explore a new way this letter goes, um, instead of hounding Duane every Thursday for his new update.
I'm okay with that.
But the thing is, is that we, you know, sometimes we write about stuff that might be a little off topic. That's kind of to us, but yeah, we're not writing about Settlers Park. And it's a project, you know what I mean? We're not sometimes writing about.
Or ash trees or whatever, you know, yeah.
You know, and, and there, you know, maybe we could get an arborist from the DNR or something or.
Yeah, yeah, the professionals saying something is going to be a lot more valuable than some polit- part-time politician.
Oh, we like to hear what you have to think, Rick.
Oh, I can spell it out with one finger.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, that's all I need.
Everybody else is.
I did get mentioned sometimes now that people are not reading as often because of the email, um, electronic. Uh, method, because you have to go in and look for it. So, I'm not sure if you, I'm not sure how many people open it.
I mean, I always glance at it.
You know, I'm not sure.
Open the utility bill.
I'll be honest, I don't look at it, but then I also review it before it goes out, so maybe reading it a second time.
Okay, thanks. Maggie? Sean?
No.
I don't.
Bruce, I got a couple of things if I could. I'm wondering if you could, or someone, the staff could talk to Chris with our engineer report. It seems to have happened a few, few times now. We're not getting the sound.
I think tonight was completely in our, our system, for whatever reason. I don't know, we'll troubleshoot and figure what's going on.
But if we could test, test it with him on our system, so.
Yeah.
And then, uh, can you mention when we had the hearing for the uh abate, abate? Thinking of abatement, the appeal. I was a little confused. Because we can't abate it, which means we can't diminish it. We can't reduce the violation. I'm, I'm trying to understand, what, what are we doing? What is the hearing? What is the hearing for? It doesn't seem like we can do it.
Really, really talking to Sky Riggs, what, what we hold the hearings for is to provide more time. Or if they've got a logical explanation why they don't believe it's a violation, that gives the opportunity for you to say, look, it's not a violation. But in this case, we had physical evidence. She admitted she had sticks and brush and everything. And then later admitted that she cleaned that up.
Yeah.
So the whole point is, you, the council can't just. Yeah, you, you, you can't waive giving a citation. You, you could delay it, but you can't say we're not going to issue one.
What's the difference between that and the bar when you wrote for the, the weed? I mean.
Well, well, yeah, so it's, it's a very similar thing. You could basically say, as a city council, um. We are not going to hold you to this citation and we'll waive the citation. Now, if they continue to operate in violation. The city then is required to issue another citation. So like, if, if for some reason, if I didn't, I was gonna say Ken, but he doesn't live in city limits. If I didn't mow my yard and I came to appeal to you guys, said, hey, I was out of town all week because you guys sent me on a trip. I couldn't get my lawn mowed. I'm back now, it's mowed. Well, the citation is still out there. And so then it's, the ci- city council can say, okay, you did get it mowed. We don't have to pay the citation. Or you can say, no, you in fact did not mow it as required, so you have to pay the citation, but thank you for not having one going forward. If I were to let my lawn continue to grow, it would be on us to then write the citation again. So really, you're just addressing the individual citation. And whether the person has to perform what the citation tells them to.
Yeah, if, if, if you did not enforce the ordinance, you would open yourself, the city, up to lawsuit from other parties for not enforcing.
Well, I guess that's where I'm confused. When you say we can't debate, what, what is, define that for me. What does that mean? We can't debate?
No, I'm saying you, you can debate it, but I think in.
I thought you said abate.
With an E.
When we, when we had a hearing, you said, and you introduced it, I thought you said, and maybe it's my hearing, we can't debate.
I guess I don't recall what I, I guess I don't recall what I said on that, but, no, we could, we could talk about the issue of, of. She wanting more time or saying, like in her mind, she didn't think it was a violation. I mean, we can talk about that, but it's hard to debate that point when I have photos of it.
Right, no, I'm not, uh, I'm just trying to understand what, what's, what, what do we have the ability to do and what don't we? And Josh, you're saying we could waive the violation. We could provide more time.
You, 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 you could waive the citation, but if the violation still exists, then another citation would, would basically be issued. So, un- unless you change city code.
Yep.
So, so it's the city code that's basically issuing the vi- the violation. So, you could waive the citation or allow them more time to correct it. But if, if I did something and you guys waived my citation and I continued to be against city code. It would be staff directive to once again issue, because they're issuing off of what the code is.
Okay, well, thank you. Because I, I went through listening. I, I got the feeling we couldn't waive this violation if she, if she asked. If that's what she was asking for.
So in an, in a.
You, you, you could have waived the, the current citation, but if she then continued to operate um with what is considered to be. An overbrushed yard by city code, it would be staff directive that we would have to bring off of city code. So we would have to issue another citation and it kind of hits this perpetual point unless city council then changes the code.
Okay, well, thanks.
I think she was going the direction of, maybe you should think about changing the code to allow.
That's what I thought.
Type of thing, but she ended up cleaning it up, so it's kind of a moot point.
A moot point.
Yeah, just a, a couple follow-up with the audit. Um, we still have the rental house fund. I'm just wondering if staff should look into that. We should close that out.
The rental fund is still on there because there's um additional rental revenues that aren't the home property. It's also the farm field that we rent out.
The rental house fund is?
Correct.
Could we change the name of it then?
Sure.
Because I think that was established.
We might not have it anyway, so I, I have it on my list to review at the end of this year because um. Yeah, it's actually, I'm sorry, it's not the farmland. It's the.
The truck parking lot.
It's the, yeah, the shed over where the new police station would go.
Which goes right into my question, so go ahead, finish up.
I thought we had leftover money when we um.
We did.
We do, yeah.
Like sixteen thousand or some number then, but if we should clear that out, because obviously we don't have the house anymore.
Yes, yes, that'll be the question. Like she said, it, it encompass, it also is this house and. That shed over the fire station. So if we're going to be taking that shed down, we now have no other rental properties that would fall under there. That shed over the fire station, so if we're going to be taking that shed down, we now have no other rental properties that would fall under there. And then it would be just kind of reallocating that money somewhere else to be either spent or to be used as part of that fifty percent. General fund requirement that we have.
This is uh, just a little thing, but the ambulance garage. Uh, and also we don't charge or we don't expense utilities to the ambulance fund. But, so I was just curious, where, where are the utilities for the ambulance garage being paid? Is that through the fire or is that? Through the city pays it or?
I believe it's part of the fire account, but I thought it was.
I, I believe per the agreement, is it paid through the fire, but the ambulance is reimbursing us on a monthly. As, as part of their monthly rent check. If I remember right from the agreement, it's been a little while since I looked at it.
Yeah, the reason I asked, the audit doesn't show any expenses on our audit, so I just thought it was thrown in something. So, will it continue that way under the new?
I think, I think that'll be up to us. I think, what is it, next year or um, is it twenty-six, Dwayne? Does that ring a bell? Of when the ambu- the current ambulance kind of service is up and I know we kind of linked to the. Contract for use of the building with that current service and so. That'll basically become a topic of conversation as we look to either enter into another. Five-year or longer, or whatever we decide to do with the ambulance.
Cause I think it was five years.
It was five years.
Is it something we should have the ability to meter that area then or to, or how would we?
Yeah, I mean, that, that. Yeah, that becomes a question of how we'd work with that.
Apparently it's not separate. Now it's not.
Correct.
But under a new construction, would, would it be or is that a big, major expense to me?
I haven't seen those electric plans yet, so I don't.
I can't answer that. Well, I, I don't think it's critical, but we could estimate the utilities too if you wanted, but. I just thought it might be more appropriate to assign the utility expense to the ambulance fund because it's. Ambulance garage is using.
And, and I know we, we kind of briefly even brought up, I think it was you that brought that up. And it was just a good conversation to have going forward, similar to that rental house, like is it worth keeping the ambulance fund around if that? Has basically been absorbed into that building um and the two hundred thousand dollars that we currently have put in there, so.
Yeah, because I don't think that fund would be able to help with anything if we, if the city would end up.
Oh, no, an ambulance is costing at least four, five hundred thousand dollars at this point.
It'd be a tick in the bucket.
That's all I had, thank you.
My land, I'll make a quick. Did you um help relocate that um, the, the guy that was renting the, the shed for his semi?
Uh, gave him a couple of names. I don't know that he's funded anything yet.
Well, we know he's not gonna be able to get anything for four hundred dollars a month, but. It sure would be nice if we could help the guy out. I mean, but I'm surprised that we didn't communicate with him over the last year we have been.
I talked to him um last June, right before we re-tin the roof, so almost a year ago. Uh, kinda, he asked me a few questions. I gave him kind of the rundown of where. Uh, the council has standard and the process that we were in and I obviously told him like nothing is set in stone, but. Um, things, if things moved along, that it would be about this time next year that uh a police station probably would be. Ordered by the council, if that's the route they decided and he was like, yeah, no, I get that.
The rough, uh, rough estimate would be about a year.
Well, a year ago, I think I talked to him right before they tin the roof, so I think that was in June that I talked to him personally.
And I will say, I've talked to him a few times. He actually is like to call always around January, just see how things are going. And I, I've, I've, I have let him kind of know um that it was something we're talking about, but like Matt said, and there's been no final decisions yet made at this point. And so.
Well, he wants me to call him back, so I'll call him back, but I'll tell him that really, it's the only hope that we can give him is what, what Ken gives you for.
Yeah, and there just hasn't been much available. I'm keeping my eyes open, but it really isn't much out there.
I'll tell him to just keep checking with you.
As I say, outside of that, we were, we basically, we gave our termination notice per the agreement um with more days.
Yes, I know, I heard about that part. Alright, thank you. Move to adjourn?
There's been a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.